You saw this? Okay.
Yeah. Ah.
Very unique. He's been only ten days.
It's understandable.
It's, yeah. Yeah.
It's incredible how people can basically get so close.
Yeah, the arts, excursion. I thought, yeah, I mean, that stuff really looked cool, but I thought, well, the.
You know, various people, Reese Witherspoon.
Yeah, I picked a couple of those. And the different names. There's a hockey game.
I love to be on the same playing instrument. Yeah, they've become it. I, it's very cool.
That's so funny. You know, usually.
They're cleaning up.
Yeah, kind of. It's great for, you know, kind of a boon dog over.
Ladies and gentlemen, calling the City of Leewood Planning Commission Regular Session Meeting to Order. Secretary, please call the roll.
Franzay.
Here.
McGurn.
Here.
Belzer.
Here.
Hoyt, here.
Block.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Carlberg.
Here.
Fishman.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
I meant to also say it's January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five, just for the record. All nine commissioners are in attendance tonight. That leads us to the second item approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda besides the one that was on the dais flipping the order?
No, Mr. Chair, and there's an updated agenda that was pushed out to the website this afternoon, and it's on the dais and available at the front podium as you walk in. Just flip flopping, putting the approval of the agenda prior to approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Cricks. Any motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Um, go ahead, sorry.
I move for approval of the agenda.
Second. Second Commissioner Block, all in favor approving approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. Before we get on to the rest of the minutes, I want to introduce officially our new Director of Planning, Julie Hurley, in the front seat. And Julie, if you could, also, we have a new Senior Planner, if you could introduce her.
I'm Carrie Keller, I'm with the Lepa and Michelle. She started last week. So we are having a staff run staff, and we'll be hopefully shortly having another new staff member come in. We're arguing for Senior Level Planner. Get our staff look up a little bit, so.
Great, well, welcome to you officially, Julie, and welcome to you as well. Thank you. That brings us up to the approval of minutes for the November twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four meeting. Are there any revisions to the minutes? Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Block.
I move for approval of the minutes from the November twenty sixth Regular Session Meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Block, is there a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Hoyt, all in favor of approving the minutes for November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting minutes are approved. We have two items that are going to be continued to our February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five meeting. Case one one six two four, Reserve and Iron Horse Town Homes. And then case twelve twenty four, Leewood Devault and Orange Amendment to Section sixteen dash four dash seven dash three. That brings us to the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. Do any commissioners wish to pull those items for further discussion? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hoyt.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Commissioner Hoyt, is there a second? Second Commissioner Belzer, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Consent agenda is approved. That brings us to new business. Case zero three dash two five, Leewood Plaza, Barstow School Annex, request for approval of a special use permit, preliminary plan, and final plan located north of one hundred and twenty third street and west of State Line Road. I believe that is Ms. Ewing's?
Yes.
Please go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you. This is case oh three twenty five, Leewood Plaza, Barstow School Annex, special use permit, preliminary plan, and final plan. The applicant is requesting approval of a special use permit for the use of a private school, preliminary plan, and final plan for the expansion of educational services and exterior modifications for the Barstow School Annex within the Leewood Plaza Development. Currently, on that site is an existing multi-tenant building, which was constructed in nineteen eighty six. And this was as part of the Leewood Plaza Development, a small multi-tenant shopping center that is structurally attached to a larger anchor tenant. The anchor tenant to the south is currently occupied by Barstow's Idea Space. The applicant is proposing to add window openings, standing seam metal roofing and coping, additional green space to the west of the building, par, re, excuse me, parking reconfiguration, and minor site improvements. Existing rooftop units would be replaced with new equipment, and the existing downspouts would also be replaced on the building. The applicant is also proposing to improve the sidewalks adjacent to the building entrance, which is east of the building, and add ADA parking stalls to ensure ADA compliance. The existing roof on the Barstow Annex portion of the building is primarily a combination of brown concrete tile shingles and a section of standing seam metal that is over the entrance of the building for detailing. The applicant is proposing to replace the existing roof with standing seam metal panels, coping, and gutters from Beridge Manufacturing Company in the color dark bronze. This would match other sites within the Leewood Plaza Development. The applicant is also proposing to install a white overlay TPO roofing membrane on the flat portion of the roof, and as well as increase the height of the northwest parapet by eight inches to ensure adequate screening. There is a detached trash enclosure to the west of the building that would be removed entirely, and a new trash enclosure would be constructed at the southwest corner adjacent to the building and structurally integrated. Integrated. This would be a hundred and seventy eight square feet in size. The trash enclosure would be approximately six feet eleven inches in overall height and constructed of brick masonry from cloud ceramics in the color Cherokee. It'd also have a metal double swing gate door from Cityscapes in a dark bronze finish and dark bronze metal capping on the ledge of the trash enclosure as well. The applicant is proposing to enclose the perimeter of the proposed green space with a six-foot decorative metal fence from Ameristar with classic style pickets. The new window framing system would be tri-fab from Conneer in the color dark bronze with insulated clear glass as well. There are three bollards that will be located on site, and they will also be painted dark bronze to match the rest of the development. The parking to the west of the building is proposed to be reconfigured to allow for the addition of green space. Ten stalls would be removed from site. However, the Leewood Plaza Development was approved under a previous LDO with a parking ratio of five parking spaces per a thousand square feet of leased space. The current LDO brings that ratio down to three point five to four point five per one thousand square feet of leased space. Therefore, the site is already overparked. Meet, and they meet the minimum parking requirements for this zoning district. And it is also important to note that there is a cross-access parking agreement for the entirety of the development, and that is recorded on the final plot. For lighting, the applicant is proposing to add twelve lighting elements. This would be a combination of recessed downlights and full cutoff wall packs from H. Williams. An interact meeting was held on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty five. A summary of the meeting and that sign-in sheet have been included in your packet. Staff did receive one pub, one public comment regarding this application that has also been included in your packet. And since this application is requesting approval of a special use permit for a private school, staff has reviewed the application with respect to the golden factors. All criteria have been addressed, and the analysis has also been included in your report. And with that, staff would recommend approval of case oh three twenty five with the eighteen stipulations listed in the staff report. And I can answer questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ewing. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Hoyt.
On the Leewood Fire Department Fire Marshal Report, there were three outstanding points. Have those been cleared up yet?
So these comments have been communicated, and the applicant will have time to work on those three comments prior to the governing body meeting.
Okay, so the assumption is that those will be all taken care of before this goes to the governing body. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Hoyt. Commissioner McGurn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious what the city's perspective, the staff's perspective is on having two special use permits, obviously started at different points in time, which would mean ending at different points in time. Does it make any sense to line them up to where they have the same end date for this institution?
Yes, we have actually discussed this internally as staff and would make the recommendation to the applicant that upon approval of this, that we can switch the date so they are at the same time of expiration.
Terrific, thank you.
Commissioner Block, didn't we see an application for the same project recently dealing with concrete tiles? And how does that impact the standing seam? Is this in replacing that or in addition to?
Yes, so the previous case was actually for Idea Space, which is the building that is structurally a part of this one, but on the southern lot. They did come forward to replace their concrete shingles with standing seam metal due to roof leaking and maintenance issues. So the applicant is proposing for this application to also use the standing seam metal to match the rest of the building.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McGurn.
Can I have one more?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, sir. On the staff recommendations and on point number four, it references "special school events or programs shall conclude prior to eleven P. M." Is, are those indoor events only? Okay, so on the back of the property where the blue portion goes all the way up to the street that is across the street from, obviously, a whole bunch of residents, there's nothing that would be enabled outside at eleven o'clock or even later based on a special permit?
No, that is not intended to be an event space. It is just more of a gathering or relaxation area. That stipulation would match the Idea Space stipulation that we had at the time as well.
So no outdoor activities, only indoor? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Franzay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the outdoor space be accessible from the Idea Space in addition to this building? Or is it only accessible from the building, the portion of the building on this lot?
Yeah, I will actually refer that to the applicant.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Michelle Cricks, Planning Department. There's actually, the applicant is proposing actually to create access between the Idea Space from the main port, part of the building into this extended, extended piece. So the floor plan, they're creating an access point into the, this new space, which then will be accessed and buy into the green space to the west.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Ewing. With that, I'll invite the applicant to come forward. Sir, please state your name for the record.
Sure, Jeff Schutzler with Pluribus Architectural Collaborative, seven two one four, West Eighth. We just moved our office over to Park, Kansas.
Thank you, welcome to the Plan Commission.
Thank you. And thank you for staff for answering so many of the questions. Glad that we've had an opportunity to work with everybody, and thank you for hearing us tonight. Happy to answer any other questions you may have. I think the staff has covered quite a few topics. And you have this pulled up, or do I need to? Okay. Just at a high level, one of the questions came up about the, my previous appearance before you was for the roofing of the Idea Space, which is the larger building on the site. They're on two separate parcels. And this building was acquired after the acquisition of Idea Space, which is why the special use permit is now lagging as a separate development. And the, the green outdoor space is being proposed, has been a desire of the, the school to have some outdoor space for some outdoor learning during the day, different activities. Things that happen in Idea Space are science, technology, engineering, art, and math related. And so this gives them the opportunity to study life sciences, you know, outdoor space, botany, launch model rockets, things like that. And have space to just, you know, spread out a little bit more. Let me move forward. There it is, all right. This is just an exhibit that shows the reduction in the parking for the addition of the green space, which again is something that has been a desire of the school to add on this campus as well. This plan is rotated from the, the previous one, but it shows a little bit of what's happening inside. So there'll be three science classrooms and three general education classrooms, as well as a new storm shelter to provide safe refuge for the, the staff and students in this building, as well as a small faculty office. And then just looking at the overall roof plan, the, the parapet's on this building, so the exterior walls are quite a bit taller than on some of the properties. So we are extending it nominally to make sure that we have the full site cutoff for the new mechanical units. But all of the rooftop equipment is largely going back in the locations where it currently exists, just given the layout and the opportunities that were provided. And then the, the south, sorry, the east facing, which is the bottom of the screen, replacing all of that mansard roofing with the, the standing seam like we'd done similar, previously requested for the Idea Space. And I know there was interest in this building as well in terms of making sure that it's up to date and weather tight and consistent with the overall development. And then just the overall. The elevation, so the, the front elevation, replacing all the glass that is currently there with new windows, new framing, similarly along the north corner. And then on the back side, adding the wrought iron style, you know, aluminum fence to provide some security for the students in the green space. As well as what we think is really a benefit for everybody is moving the current trash enclosure closer to the building. Makes it a little bit easier for both Idea Space and the new Annex to utilize, but also cleans up the, the back of the building for the neighbors as well. I think that is, that's it. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Block.
Do you see any issues to Commissioner Hoyt's question from earlier complying with the Fire Marshal's concerns or providing the information that he's looking for?
No, I don't believe so. We, we've since met with the building official and I believe have also spoken with the Fire Department as well in terms of looking at the overall planning as we prepare for building permits and things like that as well.
And then one more. I think at the last case that we had before us with the roof tiles, I think maybe you indicated or someone that, that there's still a lot of space within the main building to the south? Is that still the case that could be built out at some time in the future that's?
There is, yes.
You may be incorrect, there wasn't a need.
There's, there's approximately half of the main building that is still open, available space, depending on the, the types of programming that the, the school would envision adding in the, in the future bolstered the, the type of learning that's happening on this campus or this dislocation for them.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman. You'd kind of touched on the roof improvements and the extension of the parapet at the northwest there. I think staff mentioned it was an eight inch, but it, it's actually more of an extension, right? It's sixteen inches or so.
It, it is, yes. One, it is, what we're trying to do is the, the panel that we're utilizing, we're trying to do it in a way that we're not cutting it. It's sort of extending it.
Modular.
Yeah, it's a modular panel, so we're trying to maintain that module, so we've increased it a little bit higher on that backside. But it's the same color and material as the, as the coping.
And that height is in alignment with the top of the new rooftop units or?
It would be taller, it's, it's actually taller than.
Oh, it would be taller, okay.
Uh, we know, it, just from working with you all, looking at cutoff in terms of true elevation versus sightline studies. So to make sure that those things do comply.
Yeah, okay, cool.
And we were, we were given the opportunity on this building, because of the way that it's constructed to extend that parapet, it made it a little bit easier than adding larger roof screens kind of throughout the entire.
Right, right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I had just a couple of questions on my end. Are the classrooms going to be used for a specific grade or what's the intent?
So the, the science labs are intended for middle and high school grade levels. The classrooms are designed to support those, so they'll be, I'll say, more lecture style or seminar style learning in conjunction with the, the lab spaces. The overall Idea Space and the Science Annex jointly, though, serve K through twelve kids. The majority of the Annex will be largely targeted towards the, I'll say, sixth, fifth, sixth, and up to twelve.
Do you anticipate, are, are you going to shuttle kids over during the day?
And they do that currently, yeah. So the Barstow School owns several buses that they, they use to transport kids between campuses, depending on the grade level and the, the time of day in the week.
And is summer at Barstow going to utilize the space as well?
That is yet to be determined. They do use that, I know, they do utilize Idea Space. I think it'll depend on the timing and the, the types of course offerings in terms of what's available. New labs do open new opportunities for them, but I think that's yet to be determined in terms of what they're able to offer in summers.
And on the green space on, on the back side, that is only going to be used during the day then? There's?
That is, that is my, that is my understanding. It's, it's intended to complement the, the learning environment. I mean, they're, they're, they have a, you know, robotics team that's there probably this, this time of night, but everything remains inside. It's, they remain consistent with the special use permit that's currently in place.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. With that, this does, this case does require a public hearing, and I will open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to discuss this particular case, please come forward now. Mr. Block.
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second Commissioner Hoyt, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Public hearing is closed. Would the applicant like to say anything further before we move on? Okay. Any discussion by the commission? Commissioner Hoyt.
Well, just a overall comment, and that is, I think it's very gratifying to see this area continue to be redeveloped. And I think it's a wonderful asset for Leewood, and I appreciate the creative thinking that's gone into all of this.
Any further discussion about the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Block.
I move for approval of case zero three twenty five, Leewood Plaza Barstow, Barstow School Annex.
Second.
Second Commissioner McGurn. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving case zero three two five? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Case passes nine zero. Thank you very much, good luck to you guys. That brings us up to case zero six two five, Regent's Park Villas. Request for approval of a rezoning from RP three, Planned Cluster Attached Residential to RP two, Planned Cluster Detached Residential, and preliminary plan located south of one hundred and thirty fifth street and west of Kenneth Road. Ms. Cricks, I believe this is yours. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Plan Commission, Michelle Cricks, Leewood Planning Department. This case is oh six two five for Regent's Park, a rezoning of two point four acres from RP three, which is the Planned Cluster Attached Residential District to RP two, the Planned Cluster Detached Residential District, and a revised preliminary plan for Regent's Park located south of one hundred and thirty fifth street and west of Kenneth Road. This item comes before you this evening with a staff recommendation of approval. So the applicant is requesting to rezone twelve point four acres south of one hundred and thirty seventh street from RP three to RP two. So the Regent's Park project came before this me, uh, before this board in two thousand eighteen for fifty six point three acres for, or, yeah, for a mix of zoning districts. So currently, Regent's Park has two zoning districts attached to it. There's the mixed use or M X D, and there's the RP three, which is the Planned Cluster Attached District. So the mixed use is going to be, is located currently right along one hundred and thirty fifth street and is on the east and west of High Drive. Also, north of one hundred and thirty seventh street is a portion of the RP three, which is the Mayfair Regent's Park, which are townhomes and triplexes that were approved back in twenty one. South of one hundred and thirty seventh street currently is primarily zoned as RP three and currently approved for eighty one residential units, which are thirty six duplexes and three triplexes attached to that. This development has come before this board in various phases throughout the years. And currently with the RP three, there are three, three of those units along Pembroke do have a building permit that has been issued. And actually, a replat has come before this board also to split those in half. No changes are proposed to any portion of Regent's Park north of one hundred and thirty seventh street. So the M X D, those mix of uses that were approved when the Village Co-op came in, those mix of uses will hold. There's no changes to the Mayfair Regent's Park portion north of one hundred. Park portion north of 137th Street. So all the changes that is addressed by this application are primarily located south of 137th Street. So 137th Street, the infrastructure for that street, for Pembroke, for Guilford, and for Springfield, all that infrastructure has been installed, all of the detention is in place. So the applicant this, to eat, this evening is bringing forward the rezoning of the western portion of the RP3, south of 137th Street, and downzoning that from RP3 for the attached cluster to RP2, which is single-family residential lots with a minimum of 6,000 square foot lots. And those are going to be the lots that are going to be around Guilford and Springfield Street. So what the applicant is then proposing then is a total of 18 single-family dwelling units for a density of 1.78 dwelling units per acre. As I mentioned, that the minimum lot size in RP2 is 6,000 square feet. However, what's being proposed is the average lot size is going to be 13,476.9 square feet. The RP3 also will be adjusted a bit. As I said, those were originally proposed for, are approved with 81 dwelling units, individual dwelling units, with a portion of this being rezoned to RP2. That RP3 on the eastern portion, south of 137th Street, will actually decrease to 23 twin villas or 46 dwelling units, which is a density of 3.68 dwelling units per acre. No changes for any amenities that were approved previously with Regent's Park is being changed, so the walking trail will remain in place, as does the 20-foot tree preservation easement between this development and then the residence to the south, that will all remain in place. So the applicant has requested three deviations for the RP2, this portion being rezoned. First, they're requesting a deviation to front yard setbacks of 15% reduction. Actually, what is allowed, can we go up to a 25% reduction? They're asking for a 15% reduction. So there's a, instead of the 30-foot front, standard front yard setback for the RP2, they're requesting a 25.5 front yard setback. A second deviation being requested is a 25% reduction to the side yard setback from 10 feet down to seven and a half feet. And finally, the deviation they are requesting is going to impact the lots at the very end of the cul-de-sac within the bulb. The Leewood Development Ordinance actually requires at the build line, the width of the lots to be 100 feet. However, deviations down to 80% of that can be allowed, provided that sufficient open space has been provided. The applicant, and actually, all these deviations, you have to have sufficient open space, they're actually providing 51.6% of open space, so that open space is available for these deviations, and staff is supportive of them. Staff also did a review to ensure with the golden factors, and concluded that this rezoning does meet the golden factors, is compliant with a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan states RP2 and RP3 are medium-density residential housing, and that is what the future land use map shows to be south of 137th Street is medium-density residential. So we're going to maintain meeting the comprehensive plan with this rezoning. As I stated in the beginning of my presentation, staff is recommending approval of this application with the 28 stipul, or 20, 28, 28 stipulations outlined in the staff report. Before I am available for questions, I do want to call to your attention a memo that was placed on the dais to address a stipulation, stipulation number six, to add some verbiage in that. Now, what we're wanting, what I wanted recommending to add is to change that to state, quote, "Subject to meeting the city's adopted building code, a minimum side yard setback for the villas of 15 feet from vertical wall to vertical wall, and eight feet between egress wells of residential dwelling units within the RP3 portion shall be allowed." The reason I am recommending to add what is in red, this between the eight feet, eight feet between egress wells, is that when you go back and look at the staff reports, starting all the way back to the original preliminary plan, deviations requested was on record to say, to include that eight feet between egress wells. However, as it got stipulated, that eight feet between egress wells was dropped out of the stipulations for the deviations, and it kept getting carried forward. So now that we're back at a revised preliminary plan, and that was, that, that eight feet between the egress wells was brought up with every single staff report, as we talked about through Regent's Park, revise the preliminary plan for that, the revised, or I'm sorry, the final plan for that in case 10320, that was always intended and on record, it just never got stipulated. So this is an opportunity to clean it up. Also, I just, we did notice on 4A, there is one word missing out of, out of it, and it should say, this is stipulation 4A, it should say 15% increase in the applicable maximum FAR based on permanent open space in excess of the required minimum. So staff is recommending that little minor tweak, just to clarify the language. And with that, I'm available for questions, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cricks. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Fishman?
Michelle, I'm unfamiliar with the term egress wells. Can you describe what that is, just for my edification?
Sure. So any portion of the, of a home that goes below ground level, they'll typically have egress wells spec, for like fire exit access. Now, the code will allow egress wells, fire exits to that point to be encroached into like a side yard setback by up to three feet. So that's, the egress well just is kind of that overcompensing term to allow for fire access exit out of a basement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Truman.
Commissioner Stevens.
I guess in the, the staff report under elevations, I, I see it says no changes to currently approved elevations are proposed, but with the change of the housing to detached single-family versus what was proposed with twin villas, and I assume there really needs to be new elevations provided, but maybe that's within final plan submission?
We typically actually, for single families, excuse me, we typically don't, single family don't get elevations for single-family residential. And I'll let the applicant maybe go into more of this, but I believe that those are all going to become more of a custom-built home, as to build, you know, they're going to be engineered to fit the site into what the new owner's specification is going to be. So on single-family, we typically don't require a final plan to be provided on elevations. Those go typically straight to the, to the building apartment because single-family is allowed by rights. So that is something that just goes straight to the building department, and they will look at the approved deviation, if any deviations are approved, they'll take a look at that, they'll, they'll double-check height, they'll look at the egress windows to make sure that all that meets not only the Leewood Development Ordinance, but also meets building code and fire code.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Franze.
Yeah, the green space calculations, do those include detention ponds in that, that area? Is that included in green space?
It is, it's because it's pervious.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, with that, I'll invite the applicant to come forward. Please state your name and business address for the record.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kurt Peterson, here on behalf of the applicant, 900 West 48th Place, Kansas City, Missouri. It's my privilege to be here on behalf of the applicant, who has been hard at work on this site for some time, Mr. Rick Lashbrook, who's behind me. I hope like you, you drive by this site often, whether I'm going down Kenneth or 135th, and it really, really does bring me joy to see everything that's been happening. It's such a beautiful, beautiful terrain. You've probably seen the, Rick gave me the exact number, 90, about 90 trees that were put up on the south part of the, of the development, which I know the single-family beyond were really happy, happy with, including when we did our neighborhood meeting, they showed support for that. Certainly View High, View Drive, High Drive, not View High, High Drive, getting that put in finally with that public infrastructure. And then starting to see, as staff pointed out, I think it's three of the twin villas are coming out of the ground. So there's just a lot of activity there. Oh, and I should also mention Village Co-op, which isn't actually Rick's project, but just next to it on the former Rainier Land, seeing that breaking ground. So there's just a lot of really positive activity in this part of our city, and we're happy to be a part of that. So tonight, as staff really gave you all of the details, I would just say, if you have any questions about, I'll give you one background really fast, Aventino. So had the pleasure of working on that for a long time, and it's so gratifying, though, for everybody that was involved in taking over what became almost like an urban park, if you know what I mean. And, and it's just this beautiful neighborhood now, and homes are selling, all these custom homes are selling like hotcakes. And it might cross your mind, and I'll anticipate a question, that why would Mr. Lashbrook, at this point, with such a nicely laid-out, mixed-use, mixed-residential development, switch at this point and replace some of these villas that, again, there's great demand for them, with some single-family? And the answer is, Aventino in a way. There's such great demand for that product that you see as you drive by Aventino, that he just thought, let's make this another part of the mixed residential, you know, sort of panoply offerings there, and there's people already banging down the door. And I know our, our custom builder is ready to get going after a proper process when we get this hopefully recommendation and then through city council. So just a little bit of background on why Mr. Lashbrook made this adjustment to the overall plan, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, you have or anybody on the commission tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. Any questions for Mr. Peterson? Commissioner Block?
Kurt, you mentioned some of the progress with the twin villas. The other infrastructure, are the roads all in, and curbs, gutters, sewers, whatever else that goes into the
So, so zoom out, just to make sure, Mr. Commissioner Block, that we're talking about. So there's the master development. Have you zoomed in right now, just on this, hopefully R2 ground, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So the streets are in, and I think we're short, I'll get the nod, I think maybe we'd like, we have finished, everything's in, okay, I'm thinking back on the streetlights. So everything is in on this, this part of the streets, yeah?
So, and so when you go from a twin villa to a single, I, I mean, what, what changes, I guess, need to be made or nothing? You just abandon half of what was brought into each site, or?
I was going to say, very minimal, there's so little change. We were talking about the trail, there's a little piece of the trail that wraps around the back. It's, it's extremely minimal.
But I guess whatever stubbed up for every property?
Yeah.
So, so the sewer, the water, I mean, it's, it's double now, I assume, or not?
Well, well, the, the issue is, it's harder to actually go the other direction, right? When we, when we've stubbed it once, but with two, I don't know the super-technical, Commissioner Block, whether there's caps and things like that, but I know as we were talking about it, it's, you know, as easy as it comes. It's not hard, as hard as when you're trying to split and create more lots.
And I assume the curbs are waiting, made in a way that there are no curb cuts, I guess, there, it's, it's kind of a rolled curve, so curb, so you can go into these sites and have one versus two, and not have to redo the, all the?
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, exactly, right. You ever had the man behind the curtain?
So I guess what's the timing then? I, I understand you're, you're a smaller part of this bigger, you know, development, but what is the timing of, you know, we have a phased plan in our packet, and I don't know that the numbers necessarily go chronological, or do they?
So it, now we're in master development now, so.
Yeah, whatever these phases, you know, you've got a one and a four, and, you know, in your areas?
Yep, and I don't know if we, if every, I guess everybody has it in their packet. So, yes, thinking through the master development, we have the twin villas, which are underway, as you know. We have the single-family that hopefully gets recommended tonight and approved, and that will be going this year. You'll see homes this year. You have next the townhomes, which if you're, we're looking in front of us, if you go kind of the, the northwest of the R2 that we're talking about, the townhomes will follow, again, you'll see probably activity this year on, on that, this will help us, thank you. So not just in your mind's eye. So phase three is the townhomes, when it comes up on the screen you see in your packet. So that will follow next. And then what you're left with is the mixed use up in phases five and six, and frankly, I just honestly, interest rates, I mean, that's, you know, commercial with multifamily on top, and as much as this gentleman back here, because we talk about it all the time, would love especially to get going on that phase five, would be the first of those to go. The environment's just not ready financially, but you, we'll, we'll see it, it will come.
So maybe just to help me under, so you said three, four, and one, one, three, and four, all this year, either underway already, like in phase one, and the other two phases will also be this year, is that what you said?
Five and six, I, I, many clients would hope, but, yeah, five and six would be financial constraints, but we'll see those soon, but the other three you mentioned are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fishman?
Kurt, what size are the single-family residents?
So we, it's funny, we were just back there talking about that, because they're all custom, but still, we know the lot size, and we know the, the, Mr. Willis, the very well-known custom home builder. So first, go to Aventino in your mind, but then putting a number to it, so it'll be very similar size. We were talking about 25 to 2,500 to 3,000 square foot main level, and then a lot of them step down and have the finished lower level, and that would be in addition to that.
Great, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Block?
One more then, Kurt. So you mentioned Aventino, because I know you were involved in that, but what about the development to your north? There are single-family homes there, how does that, your product compare with that, or not?
And you're talking about across the street. I am not as well-versed in that, so I could, if I started talking, I'm going to break my dad's rule, which is speculating from the podium, so I'm going to, if you respect that, I will not speak to that, I'm not.
I, I just, I assume that's been taken into consideration with demand, I mean.
Absolutely right, we, we have talked about that.
There are a lot of product right there. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? One, one question for you, Mr. Peterson. What's, what's the price point, do you estimate this development to be?
Yeah, it's been interesting to watch Aventino. I, I would say, I'll actually, again, look, I mean, I'm involved in that a lot, but I, I really think you're going to see homes that are all, you know, originally, they were saying in Aventino, 800,000, but I think you're seeing mostly a million up, yeah, 1.5 even, so. I, there was aspirations at one time that we would, we would be below a million, but you guys know the market these days in terms of construction cost and quality, and so. And it goes much higher than that even.
I've noticed the, the signs originally had price points on 135th, and they keep going up. Homes starting at whatever, and they just keep going up and up.
I've watched the digit, actually, the first digit go up to the next one on a few of those, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay, this case does require a public hearing, and I will open up the public hearing. Is anyone in the public like to speak on case 0625?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Block?
Seeing none, I move to close public hearing.
Commissioner Block? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hoyt. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Public hearing is closed. Brings us to discussion. Any discussion by the members? Commissioner Hoyt?
I find this to be an enhancement, and I'm excited to see it.
Any other discussion?
I could just second that Liz's comment. Looks like a great project, and I'm glad that, I'm glad it's been brought forward.
Commissioner Fishman, any other discussion? I'll, I'll add on top of that, I'm very excited to see single-family homes and homeownership on 135th Street. I would much rather have that than, than apartments. I, that helps grow Leewood in the right direction, so. Okay.
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Hoyt?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of case 06-25, Regent's Park Villas, request for approval of rezoning from RP3 to RP2. Second.
Second, Commissioner Belzer, any discussion on the motion?
With the amended stipulations.
Thank you.
Still second.
All right, still second.
Second, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Block.
Second, my second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of approving case 0625, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Case 0625 is approved 9-0, and heads to the city council. Thank you, gentlemen, good luck with your project. Brings us to case 0125, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-1, Establishment Districts, MDX4. Request for approval of an amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance pertaining to an update to the use hierarchy table in Section 16-2-1 to include MXD4 zoning district. Ms. Cricks, this is yours as well, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Michelle Cricks, Leewood Planning Department. And this is case oh one dash two five, Leewood Develop, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section sixteen dash two dash one, the Establishment of Districts. So in 2024, we actually brought forward a number of L D O amendments, as I'm sure you all are aware. Two of them actually really affected the zoning districts. First of all, we brought forward a amendment to what used to be known as a flood overlay district under the special purpose district and that went through a major overhaul. And you may remember, Mr. Scoville from the Public Works Department gave a very long presentation about, about it.
Very impressive.
Well, he gave a very, he gave a very detailed presentation. And in that presentation, in part of it changed it from the flood hazard overlay to the special flood hazard area. Later in 2024, we brought forward a new zoning district, kind of tied into the mixed use, which is the M X D four, the mixed use district with a four, a four-story maximum. We did all that, you know, we brought forward these amendments to these districts. However, we, unfortunately, made an oversight and didn't include them into this hierarchy table to show where they would fall within this hierarchy table from the most restrictive use being at the very top to the least restrictive use being at the bottom of the table. So what we're proposing is to just change, under the special purpose district, to change that to say special flood hazard overlay, or flood hazard areas, excuse me, no overlay, and then adding the M X D four above mixed use district because the M X D four is actually a more restrictive district than the traditional M X D with the, with the restriction in height. So this is what staff is proposing. There are no proposed changes to actual text of either of these zoning districts being proposed. We just need to kind of do a little cleanup here. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cricks. Any questions for staff? Okay, this case does require a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on case zero one two five?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Block.
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second Commissioner Hoyt, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, public hearing is closed. Brings us up to discussion. Any discussion on this particular case?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Block.
I move for approval of case zero one twenty-five, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section fifteen dash two dash one, Establishment Districts, M X D four.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Block, second Commissioner Franze. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving case zero one two five? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, case zero one two five is approved. Mr. Lee, do you have anything on your end? Want to talk about?
Uh, no, let me add, oh, I would just remind everybody that the RP four, the planning and the L D O, they issued yesterday. So those are posted on the website, it's Thursday the eleventh, I'm pretty well-hallucinating. But that's the way I need to, the voting board to be back on March fourth. Chairman Coleman and Commissioner Franze are going to help out on our selection committee for Sol. So hopefully to get that done in April and wraps up the deal about the project in June. And so we have a lot of opportunities for you all and everybody else in the public.
Okay, thank you very much. One additional thing, the National Planning Conference is being held at the end of March, early April. Myself, Commissioner Stevens are on to go. If anyone else would like to join us, I think we still have a couple extra slots. And I think Cameron are going and Julie is going.
Cameron and I will be there. So if anybody else wants to pop on, let them know.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Okay, we are adjourned.